Is everyone here?
Yep, we were waiting on you.
Is Paul out there? I don't see Paul. No, it's 3:01. Let's go ahead and start the meeting. This is the May 18th meeting of the NACFA Board of Directors. We're conducting the meeting virtually per the emergency orders that were passed by both Rose and Holly Township. Ms. Walls, could you do a roll call, please?
Yes, now I can. Gamka? Collis?
Yes.
Shab Snyder? Shab Snyder? You're muted.
Sorry, present, they're asking Paul for a passcode, so he has a time to get on.
Winchester?
Here.
Chief Luntz?
Here.
I will note when Mr. Gamka comes online.
I'm here too.
Okay, up, sorry, I already called you, yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Somebody must have answered.
Someone answered, okay.
You're here, Mr. Stouffer is here.
Okay. With that, you all have a copy of the agenda for today. We have a agenda proposal. It includes two items in new business. Is there? Do we, do we need a motion to approve the agenda?
We do, but Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I see Laura Murphy is with us. Is she on this meeting to make a presentation? Does she need some time? No? Okay, I just wanted to check.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, George.
Support.
Thank you for the support. Now, all in favor?
It has to be roll call, you're paying.
Has to be roll call, can we have a roll call, please?
I take that back, not for the agenda approval, the consent agenda will have to be roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is approved. Under the consent agenda, we have, we have two items. We have approval of the minutes from the April 20th meeting. And we have the financial reports for the general fund revenue and expense and the equipment replacement fund revenue and expense report.
Chairperson Stouffer would like to pull the minutes from the last meeting for correction.
Okay. You want to just correct them now, or you want to pull them out and put them in as an agenda item?
We can correct them now, it's just a simple correction.
What is it?
Page three of the minutes from last month's board meeting under new business budget for FY 2021 should be FY 2022.
So noted.
And again, right below that in the first sentence, FY 2021 should be FY 2022.
Okay, good catch, thank you for finding that.
I have another correction. On these minutes. On page three at the top, it's motion by Shab Snyder, second by Winchester. Motion carried to authorize the attorney. And it says, "Per conversation with Mr. Collis," I didn't have a conversation with the attorney. So it should just say, authorize the attorney to provide letters to the board as discussed in closed session.
Yeah, I think that's correct, I don't, I don't know what that conversation was relating to.
That was related to the information that the anonymous emails and the letters that you had received that Holly Township had not been able to see at that point. And then the second motion was by Gamka authorizing to hire Bodeman Attorney and Counselor's Law Firm. In that, not in the motion, but in that discussion, I had brought up the fact that no funding, no budget appropriations had been made.
Is that correct? I thought you made that, that comment after the meeting was adjourning.
No, I had made, I had made it during that discussion, and I also made it in closing comments. I brought it up a second time.
Okay. There any other modifications or corrections to the minute?
If that second, but George, what you were stating as far as what has moved, that I moved to give the Chairman of NACFA Board, the authority to hire Bodeman, that was not part of the the motion.
And I said that.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm, thank you.
We'd move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Hold on, hold on, let me go back to what, what you just said, Diane. So, George, are you trying to amend the motion?
No.
Give me those comments?
Nope.
Okay.
You just want that added as a comment?
Yes, I wanted noted that that was part of the discussion.
And the one before that that said something about the about your discussion or per conversation.
The one before that, if you just were use a motion carried to authorize the attorney, take out per conversation with Mr. Collis, I didn't have a conversation with the attorney. So you can just go right on to say to provide letters to the board as discussed in closed session.
Okay, I wrote the reason I said.
That wasn't, that was in reference to your conversation with me, not with the attorney.
Correct.
It was referencing to board discussion during their closed session.
Yes, but if you read it the way it was written, it appears as I had a conversation with the attorney, I did not.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
I am too.
I think we were having, going to have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modified minutes.
Support.
In that motion.
Moved by Ms. Winchester, supported by Mr. Collis. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Winchester.
Yes.
Collis?
Yes.
Shab Snyder?
Yes.
Stouffer?
Yes.
Gamka's not here yet, so.
Yeah, yeah, because you're.
Is he?
I see him, can't hear him.
Oh. You're muted, Paul.
How's that?
There.
All right.
Mr. Gamka, how do you, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you for that. Moving on to reports, we have the chief's report to start with.
Monthly report for April, run count was in your agenda packet, we had a total of 95 runs that we responded to, 66 of which were medicals, we transported 48. Response times for the emergency calls was 7.4 minutes. We had 16 out of district runs. Any questions on the run report from April? I would also like to let the board know, last month, starting the first week of April, we had outbreak of COVID. Two of our employees ended up testing positive. And that led to contact tracing, exposure control with the any other employees that they may have worked with within the last week of when they contracted that. It ended up affecting, at the beginning of April, about four employees being off for 14 days. Then again, in the third week of April, beginning of the third week of April, we actually had another two personnel that tested positive. Doing the contact tracing and exposure control from that led to a total of about 12 employees having to be off for 14 day stints during the month of April. That pretty much crippled us for getting shifts covered. I ended up, we ended up having to obviously try and backfill as much as that as we could. And I ended up spending about $14,000 in overtime last month. I am happy to say that everybody recovered. All the people that were exposed are now back at work as of just a couple of days ago, so. Hopefully, we don't have to go through that again, but with all the extreme measures that we take to try and prevent that and the guidelines we have and the check-ins, it's still susceptible. That is all I have for my report.
Okay, thank you, chief. Ms. Shab Snyder or Mr. Gamka, do you have a Rose Township report?
Well, I have a comment, I'd like to congratulate Diane Shab Snyder. She was recently appointed to Ascension Genesis Hospital Emergency Medical Services Board of Directors. And I think that there's some recognition for her efforts in Rose Township.
The Medical Services Education Board of Directors, just the education part, but thank you, I appreciate that. This is the 46th Annual National EMS Week, Rose Township sends out our best wishes to the safety and for safety and good health of the EMS personnel on the front lines who continue to take care of our communities. So I'd just like to make that announcement. And that's all I have.
Okay. Now, Mr. Collis or Ms. Winchester, do you have a Holly Township report?
I'll let Karen go first.
I don't have anything.
Okay. We had our spring cleanup last week. I want to thank NACFA and all the guys and gals that came out to help with that spring cleanup. I'm amazed at every cleanup, how much stuff comes down. Three compactor trucks full, 80 yards worth of dumpster filled. Well over 100 tires, you would think, man, how the township would be empty, but it keeps coming. So we will have another cleanup in the fall.
Okay. Anything further?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Citizen large report, I want to do, first of all, recognize the amount of attendance at this meeting. This is certainly by far the largest attendance that I've ever seen. May have set a NACFA record. Now, we have some, some difficult issues to, to address today. And I am hopeful that we can do it in a, in a professional, professional manner. And get through this, this relatively difficult period in NACFA. And figure out the direction we're, we're heading and make sure that we continue to cover the the citizens of both Holly and Rose Township to, to the best of our ability. And I guess that's all I have. So thank you for that. Moving on to the agenda, we have no presentations scheduled. We have under unfinished business, I actually asked to have this item removed from, from the agenda. But we don't, we don't have anything to currently discuss on the employee issue. So if it's still here on the agenda, if anyone wants to discuss that, remember that depending on what portion of it you want to discuss here, we may have to go into closed session if you, if you do want to discuss it. Is there anything to discuss?
Not if the report hadn't been filed, you could have pulled it off the agenda, we did the agenda approval.
No, usually, old business stays on until the business is done.
Oh, does it? Okay.
Yes. You would just need a motion to remove, to have discussion about it, if it's on the agenda. And if nobody has a motion, then we don't discuss.
Okay, so just table it.
Tabled until, until further, further meetings. Under new business, we have item A, additional attorney costs for the fiscal 2021 budget. Do we have any discussion or? And again, this could be potentially a sensitive issue, and depending on where this goes, we may have to go into closed session.
I don't know that there's anything here that would take us into closed session. We have, the chief can tell us what was the money budgeted in the 2020-21 budget for attorney fees?
$500.
And we have two bills in front of us totaling $6,312.50. How much of that 500 was left? Chief Luntz?
I'm sorry, you're asking me?
We have two bills in front of us, for $1,312.50 and for $5,000. Now, how much of the 500 had already been spent?
I think right around a couple hundred dollars for miscellaneous things that I could confer with him throughout the year on.
Okay, well, we needed that number because we have to put in, we have to make a budget amendment. We have to move money from somewhere into the attorney line to cover $6,312.50 minus whatever's left in that appropriation.
But then, and we also have to include the possibility of what the rest of the attorney fee is going to be.
Well, we can do that all at once, or we can do that when the next bill comes in. Somehow, we have to amend the budget. The, the attorney fee was set at a limit of $10,000. So if the board wants to, we could reappropriate, we could reappropriate 10,000 plus 1,300. That would cover everything. But we at least need to figure out where that's coming from.
What, what is the 1,300, George? The, the cap?
It's in your packet. There are two bills here.
Oh.
One is a billing statement, and then the other one is the $5,000 retain.
From David Laddie.
Yeah, Laddie, because he did correspondence and stuff to us and attended our meetings, that's his charge. And then half of the employee issue attorney.
It's the retainer fee.
Yep.
So we have a total of $6,312.50. We only appropriated 500. So we've got a shortfall, which means we have to take the money from somewhere to replace this.
This Shab Snyder?
And we're going to be doing our year-end amendments, can't, would that just be part of that? We'll know better by that time as well.
I think we need to give the chief direction, that's quite a sum of money.
Okay, well, since the chief makes.
A total of $11,1312, if you consider the 10. And the board needs to direct him where he's supposed to take that.
Okay, well, considering the chief makes the budget, I guess I could ask the chief, chief, where do you feel you could take that money from in order to amend that line cost center?
At this, at this point in our budget year, since we're at the end, we're very tight with everything. The only thing I can consider, offer right now is to pull it out of our capital replacement.
Okay, what was that again?
Out of the capital replacement.
Oh, out of the capital fund.
It's very unfortunate.
I believe, though, for us to do that does not, not require a super majority or a four-fifths vote to, to make that move.
It's amending our budget.
But I think moving it out of the capital is a special case.
It should be, it is a special case, and we shouldn't be doing that.
I'm asking about procedure, I want to make sure that if we, if we decide to go in that direction, can, can anyone verify that it's supposed to be a four-fifths vote?
I believe we've already decided to spend that money or allocated, so what other things have been taken from capital improvements in the past? I can maybe that could give us some kind of direction.
Well, capital improvement cost item gets reduced pretty much every year because we, you know, to different issues throughout the year and with our tight budget, we, you know, kind of used, we unfortunately had to use that to offset other things in the past. So again, going, going with what the current budget is and all the line items, we're pretty tight with everything being the end of the year for that much money to, to go into the legal line item. I don't know where else it would come from but the capital transfer.
But I think the question Mr. Stouffer is asking is, do we need a four-fifths vote? Or a simple majority?
I think it's just the majority, and it's, it shouldn't be anything different than the norm.
I believe it would just be, just like amending the budget that we do a couple of times a year, we're just robbing Paul to pay Peter, if you will.
Yep.
I agree.
That's funny.
Okay.
So we might as well wait until we do the rest of the budget amendments then.
I, I agree.
George, are you okay with that? Mr. Collis, are you okay with that?
Well, I I mean, if that's what the board decides.
Okay, I'll make a motion to.
I think, I think the chief needs direction as we go forward. I mean, if you don't want to do it, want to do it the next meeting.
Well, it appears to me that's the only direction that the chief is suggesting to us. And so since he's in charge of the budget and creates the budget, then I think we would be looking for a direction from him.
Somebody just flushed the toilet.
Yeah, so ju- just, just for reference here, I am reading in Article 12, Board and Officer Duties. The authority shall create a new capital purchase account. And by a four, four fifths vote, the monies from this fund may be used for purposes other than as specified herein. So it does require a four-fifths vote to, to spend any of that money. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty positive that we have pulled money from that account before for other, for other overages. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that we haven't actually followed that guideline before. But, but I don't want to, I don't want to repeat those mistakes. And if we ultimately decide to pull it from there, we will follow the bylaws as they're speaking.
We don't know that they were mistakes unless they were done on a three to two vote.
No, they're usually not a problem.
If they were five nothing votes, then nothing improper was done.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. So we have a motion on the table, Ms. Shab Snyder?
I was considering making one, but now that you've said that, I guess I'll make a motion to. But why don't we let the chief see if he can find it somewhere else, I guess that, so I guess the motion would be to wait for our, as we technically have approved to, are ready to use that money towards the attorney, so as a board. And that has, that motion was carried, so I guess, why don't we wait until the final amendments? So instead of, when he can actually look at that better.
Well, I think we did, the board approved the expense, but George asked several times where the money was coming from, so that the board did not agree where it was coming from. That's my interpretation anyway.
Well, it is, so.
We.
It's discussed in this meeting, or it gets pushed off to the next meeting. That's, that's up to you how you want to do it, at some point, this has to be dealt with.
So again, a procedure question, George, do I need, do I need a motion to put this off until next meeting?
Yeah, if you're going to table it to the next meeting, if we want to send the chief back to bring us a report of all those line items and where they fall, as he said, we're close to the end of the year.
We'll have to do end of the year amendments anyways, I'm assuming that's not the only thing that needs to be amended, am I correct, chief?
Uh, yeah, that's correct, we will have one final budget amendment that we normally do in June, right, right towards the end.
Okay.
So my curiosity speak, what, why is this issue being brought up this way as opposed to just handling it the way that we always handle variances to the budget?
I believe because Supervisor Collis asked for that at our last meeting.
I did, because I asked when the motion was made. I'm concerned as to how we're going to pay for these bills and where it's going to come from.
Yeah, that's what she did, so I believe that's why that's on the agenda.
Yep. So you can make a motion to table it and, and take it to the next meeting.
I would, I would entertain a motion right now to table this and to put it, to put it aside until the next meeting.
I would make a motion to postpone until the next meeting.
I agree, the language is be postponed. So I'll support, support.
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Walls, would you do a roll call, please?
Yes, Winchester?
Yes.
Shab Snyder?
Yes.
Collis?
No.
Gamka?
Yes.
When, um, who did I call?
You have Stouffer and Gamka left.
Stouffer, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I lost track. Vote is four to one.
Okay. Moving on to the second item of new business, the fiscal 2022 budget discussion. To, to frame this discussion, I think it's important to note, and I'm actually surprised it didn't come up in the, in the township reports. At our last meeting, we, as a NACFA board, voted to send a budget to the townships. I think it's very, very important that we're very clear that this board does not approve any budgets. This, this, this board sends budgets to the townships for their approval. We, we did that and came up for, as an agenda item on the Rose Township trustees meeting last Wednesday. And I believe it's on the agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, George, for the Holly Township trustees meeting tomorrow.
That is correct.
That is correct. At the Rose Township meeting, a motion was made to approve the budget as, as submitted. The current budget calls for a contribution of $920,000 per township. 920 for Rose and 920 for Holly. The emotion was made at the meeting and received no support. And so, in, in essence, the motion doesn't exist because there was no support for it. Subsequent to that, a motion was made at the Rose Township meeting to approve a budget at last year's fiscal contribution, which was $818,000. That motion was seconded, that motion was voted on, and it was passed by a four to one vote in, in Rose Township. Putting us in a, in a interesting situation within, within NACFA. Subsequent to that, I reached Um, subsequent to that, I reached out to all of the Rose Township uh board members to try to get some clarification, to try to understand. I I certainly was surprised by the vote. Um, but but l- lacking a a substantial discussion at the Rose Township meeting. Um, I I wanted to find out what about the budget was was not the nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget, what was not acceptable to Rose. Um, I've received um some feedback on that uh from from one board member. Uh, but I I don't have a tremendous amount of clarity yet as to exactly what that is. I did personally have a meeting with with chief to discuss some of these issues um and try to come up with a a game plan for how we how we fund the the authority and how we continue to move forward. And and again, they're not not a tremendous amount of clarity yet, but but certainly a lot of willingness to have discussions and to and move this subject forward. The the other thing that I did was uh follow very closely some of the discussions online about this subject. And I'm 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 quite disappointed uh in several members now in in one particular member of the Nakva Officer Corps uh for presenting online um opinions that uh clearly were made to seem like they were coming from Nak- Nakva as opposed to his personal opinion. I have absolutely no issues with personal opinions, but I I asked last night for for chief to to look into whether our social media policy was violated by some of our officers, uh not not an issue that we have to take up, that that clearly belongs to the chief to 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 deal with. I also um was very concerned about um what happens within our bylaws if if this type of issue comes up. So I I uh reached out to our attorney and asked him for ask him for an opinion on where exactly we stand legally. Um, he responded to me just this morning, and I wasn't able to uh to pass it on to everybody, but but the essence of his response is that the bylaws um state, and I'm paraphrasing. In the event a participating municipality does not approve, and then he bolded the word any. So a participating municipality does not approve any budget by June thirtieth. It shall be deemed to have given notice if it's intent to withdraw from the authority. He then gives, so that's just the wording of the of the bylaws with his bolding of the word any. Uh, he then proceeds to give an opinion that states um that uh Rose Township did not have, did not adopt the proposed budget submitted by Nakva, but moved to contribute an amount based on last year's budget. By doing so, they technically adopted a budget that they were obligated to adopt under the any budget under Article seven. So I don't believe that this ac- activates the intent to withdraw language. So his his current understanding is that by approving a budget, therefore any budget, um, we are not in danger of activating the the dissolution clause of the of the bylaws. Karen, I'm Ms. Winchester.
I wholeheartedly disagree with that, and I I I'm disturbed that you would unilaterally do that without um us doing that as a board. Um, it very clearly says, and I'll read, and it's not bylaws, there are articles of incorporation, which are ordinances. The authority's fiscal year shall be July one to June thirty. It shall be the duty of the board to prepare an annual budget for submission to the participating government units on or before May first of each year. Both governments, government units shall approve or reject the proposed budget, not any budget on or before June thirtieth of the preceding commencement of the authority's fiscal year. In the event a participating municipality does not approve, it does say any budget at that point. By June thirtieth, it shall be deemed to have given notice of its intent to withdraw. We can't have separate budgets. They either approve or or reject the budget that was proposed for the Nakva board. If we're going back to the table, then we need to do it unilaterally. But my, what I'm really disturbed about is that we had more than ample opportunity for Rose to make comment to the Nakva board about what they didn't like about the budget. We had plenty of time to talk about that and work out a budget that may have been uh more likable to them. There was no, nothing ever conveyed to the Nakva board by the Rose members whatsoever about the problems they had with the budget. This is like blowing us right out of the water at the eleventh hour, eleventh and a half hour. And you still nobody that the Rose Township Board, yeah, talking about a nine hundred thousand dollar budget, which is one of their biggest budget items, and one of the most important things they do for the residents, and there was not any discussion on their board about why they were doing what they were doing. None, zero.
So so I'd like to respond to that. Um, thank you. Thank you for for uh stating that. Um, you you did confirm that it does say any budget. And so, so I'm I'm speaking up. Um, and so the the legal opinion of our attorney uh clearly states right now with his understanding that that would not trigger that. That does not by a long shot mean that we don't have a whole bunch of work to do. We we have to come to some sort of consensus here, but it certainly, in his opinion, does not trigger the dissolution. Um, we have a number of other um potential uh methods of overcoming this, everything from a from a temporary budget to to something else that we can do um to to make this go forward. And he 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 gives some additional commentary about that in here. Um, I think it's also clear that it's very it's very important that as we talk about this, this is not about whether uh the two members of Rose Township's Board of Trustees uh stated anything in our meetings or not. That that is absolutely irrelevant. They voted to pass this budget onto their boards. They cannot, nor can you predict how the board will react. They are not going to speak for the board. Um, and given additional information, additional time, they have the right to at their board make a decision about what that what that budget and what that funding will be. So they're following the process, and it is our duty, our fiduciary duty as a board here, to resolve this issue. Um, this is this is not a time for for attacking the the process or anything else. It's we clearly have a budget gridlock that we have to solve. This is a normal process that happens within within government. And so um I'm I'm not going to entertain commentary about what went wrong or what went right. We are here right now. Let's figure out how we're gonna move forward, how we're gonna preserve Nakva, how we're gonna fund Nakva.
Well, if there was no.
Ms. Ms. Shive Snyder, you had your hand up.
Well, yeah, now, don't bull nose through this, as I'm gonna respond as on top of that, is there was no good good faith ever during our budget talks, and there was no discussion by their board whatsoever. Please acknowledge that. That is true. There was no no discussion, not even from the Nakva board or from Rose Township, and that needs to be acknowledged.
Ms. Shive Snyder?
I actually am the one during the the budget hearing or the budget meeting that requested the chief go through line by line. Um, I know that I also had. Um, I don't know if that part was recorded, but I know that I did say I'm not in um support of an additional full-time person. Um, I know that I very clear on, I stated that, so those those comments are incorrect.
No, they're correct. That's true.
Okay, thank you, because Rose Township was quote this, you know, stated that they didn't say anything, and I absolutely did. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cullis?
Yeah, well, there were several things with, when you started talking about this, you you said that at their meeting, they passed a budget for this. There was a motion made at their meeting to pass the existing budget, and there was no support. Neither one of the Nakva board members chose to support that, at which point that budget could have been voted up or down, because a motion doesn't automatically mean we pass. If you get no votes, it's passed down. The question that has to be asked, and you said, we're not, again, you're trying to control a meeting and tell us we can't have a conversation. It says right here is the board is to prepare an annual budget. In that preparation, we sit and have conversations about the budget, and we come to this agreement that this is the budget we're gonna take back and present. It's interesting to me that at no time did anybody say, I don't think this is gonna work, this, we need to look at something different. It was just a five-nothing vote. Now, you can discount it if you want. My other concern is you said after that, you reached out to the Rose Township Board. That's not the the whole story. After that, you called Mr. Lince at home. We have copies of the emails from from the two of you. In that exchange, you called him and told him you ordered him to come up with a new budget for our next meeting. That's documented in the email between you and Mr. Lince. Now, under our Board and Officer Duties, it says, the chairperson of the board shall be the presiding officer thereof, except as herein otherwise provided. The chairperson shall have no executive or administrative functions other than as a member of the board. That was out of line to call him there until it comes before this board. Now, we've had this conversation where the two board members from Holly Township have felt like Rose Township's taking over this board, and they're doing whatever they want. We have a history of three to two votes to back that up, and those votes are not three to two mixed company. They're on township lines. There is an issue here that needs to be addressed. And and to sweep it under the rug, I I mean, I don't understand it. Now, Holly Township Board tomorrow is going to address this budget. What are you gonna do when we approve one budget and they've approved another? And and you're saying no discussion is allowed to have. They're not allowed to give us any reasons? So we're just stuck.
I have a few few responses to that. The first one is, no, I'm not telling you can't discuss anything. I'm trying to frame the discussion so we can have a professional discussion and get to a resolution on this issue.
I don't think I've been unprofessional.
Yeah, right. We're adults. You don't need, we don't need to be told what to do, Peter.
Um, secondly, I think the chief will support this in that um. I I chose not to bring up that phone call because it it didn't go very well. Um, I certainly did not order you to. I think I think you would support that. I called up chief, asking him, what the heck are we going to do? I need to to figure out how we're gonna move Nakva forward. I asked him what his thoughts were about it, and I asked if he would um sharpen his pencil and if he would you know, consider doing a a budget that would meet what we what we just saw from Rose. If if you, George, interpret that as me telling him what to do and overstepping my bounds, um, I I I apologize for your misunderstanding of that. Chief, am am I correct in my in my view?
Well, as as you stated, you called me. I was not in the best of moods at the time, and um you, you know, asked me to go back, sharpen my pencil, come up with a another plan in which I responded to you that I was not going to do that because we were still under a uh proposed budget that had been approved by the board as a full and really had only gone halfway through its process. And I felt that it was out of line to go back and recreate something that I was not asked of by the full board.
Right. At any point did I order you to do anything?
I would say it was an order. It was a request to go back.
And was a request so that we could have a a better meeting today um and and discuss what the potential ramifications of a lower budget would be? So we could move this forward faster?
I believe you were in that concept of the reasoning behind it, but again, I stated that I wasn't uh at the point where I was going to do that right now.
Mister Mister Gamka?
Uh, I wanna, what I think, clear up some of this was when we, when I voted on this, I assumed that we were going to, I was looking for the um monies that we're getting. We're still collecting our monies from the um our millage. In the current year that we are in, we contributed seventy thousand dollars from the general fund to Nakva because our millage does not come due until um next year. So we're under this millage uh constraint for another year. When I got my last settlement, maybe about a week ago, and um when I added up all the money that um I came up with, that we were gonna be short on the in on Rose Township of about three hundred thousand dollars. We would have to contribute three hundred and seventy-five thousand from the general fund on July first or second to make our contribution. My feeling is is that um I certainly didn't want to approve a budget and then surprise our the Board of Trustees, Rose Township Board, and say, by the after the fact that, hey, you're gonna have to write a check for three hundred and seventy-five thousand out of the general fund. Um, and um so I felt that it was better to um not vote for this budget. We have plenty of time to have the extra meetings or to work this out. But right as things stand, if we were to approve this budget, um Rose Township would have to pay three hundred and seventy-five thousand out of the um general fund to meet our commitments. And I think that this is something that the Board of Trustees for Rose Township should be able to discuss rather than just going and surprising them. We have more than enough time to come to an agreement and work this out. So I want to um, I was kind of surprised that it was that much, but um the other thing is that I was surprised that the um uh budget was increased as much as it was. So right now, we need to go back at Rose Township and see if they wanna pay and three hundred thousand dollars out of the general fund for this, and uh Diane is working on the budget, and we're gonna have discussions on this. We have our pass our budget in June. We have, as far as I'm concerned, we have all sorts of time to resolve this before June thirtieth. Thank you.
Cullis?
Yes, two things. Just to clarify, Mr. Stauffer, you said in your conversation with the chief, you asked him to consider. I'm reading your email, and you said, could you please sharpen your pencil and create a new budget? That's a request. That's a asking him to do it. You didn't ask him to consider, but it's not the place of the chair, that it's the place of this board to make these decisions. Secondly, what Mr. Gamka just said, everybody can go to Rose Township's meeting. It's on YouTube. At twenty-three minutes and thirteen seconds, they just, they start to discuss the Nakva budget. Nowhere in that conversation do they have any discussion whatsoever. Mr. Gamka doesn't bring up any of that in that meeting. It's just gonna automatic. Nobody seconds the other motion. Then the supervisor calls for a new motion. Nobody makes a new motion until she says, Mr. Noble, did you want to make a motion? And then Mr. Noble makes the motion, at which point Paul has to correct him on what to make. He has to correct him on the numbers. The motion's made, no discussion whatsoever, and four to one vote to turn it down. How did everybody know that there was that three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar shortfall? And I bring this up because it's very important to understand that we as a board in Rose Township have a, as a board, have a responsibility to this department, and this department has been reeling for a week as to what was going on. And you're right, in the Articles of Incorporation, and based on what the attorney said, the word any makes a big difference. And Mr. Gamka's right, there still is time to fix this and work this out. But when you hold a meeting and you do something like that, and nobody knows what's coming, no discussion whatsoever, and they just automatically know. Nobody asked why we weren't passing the other one. Nobody asked anything. It makes it appear like it was all decided behind closed doors, and it came forward. There was, go to that Rose Township meeting at twenty-three minutes and thirteen seconds and look at it. No discussion whatsoever. You've got an entire fire department. It's Mr. Lent said, his phone blew up, my phone blew up. Everybody gets excited. It's not a very responsible way to do things.
There was plenty of time when in our budget discussions for that to come out, that had to have been known before a week ago. We know what ours is well in advance.
Mr. Cullis, just a clarification. Is is there um, are are you suggesting that we somehow reprimand the Rose Township Board for their behavior or doing something which is which is improper or against rules or law?
No, if I was, I would have said that. What I What I'm saying is, we have a responsibility, these are people's lives, these are employees. We have fought for three years to change the pay structure so that we would hopefully stop losing employees. Everybody knows countywide, statewide, finding employees for these kinds of services is hard to do. We raise salaries significantly on the bottom end to try to keep the flow of people from leaving Nakfa. We didn't want Nakfa to become a training center for other departments. We made those decisions and we move forward. When you have a meeting, again, you go to that meeting and watch, nobody says a word of why. They just vote it down and move to something else and it sends this shockwave through the entire department. And, and we've got to be better than that. This could have been brought up, Mr. Gamka could have brought this shortfall up when we prepared the budget to send back.
Exactly.
It wasn't brought up then. He could have brought it up in that meeting when they made the motion to approve it and said, I have some concerns. They didn't have that discussion. They sat there, nobody seconded it. They jumped into the next motion to reduce, to approve last year's budget. And again, no discussion. So you left all those people that were watching, I was not one of them. I didn't come to that meeting. I thought everything was just going to go like it normally does, until your phone blows up and people are all wondering, what happens next? And all I'm saying is for us as five members of this board to be responsible. Mr. Stover, that actually leaves you out because you're not a board member. But I'm saying to the other board members, we have a responsibility to this board. And we have to treat it as such. And now, for the first time since May 12th, I believe was their meeting, Mr. Gamka has said his concern is the three hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's a fair concern. It's a concern we will address. And he's correct, we have until June 30th to fix that.
Well, my concern, I did not bring this up because anything that we've said, I've been attacked by Karen Winchester and other people on, on this board that has been going on. So I'm going to say, fine, I'm not going to, I don't want to provoke people. I'm going to, I'm going to keep it to myself and we're going to work this out. And we can do this at the Rose Township. So this is, this is what happens. This board is, people are taking things personally, they're attacking each other. It's, it's very unprofessional.
I would absolutely never attack you on a budget issue. You, it was the duty of the board members to bring forth their issues. And we're going to have to work it out one way or the other, so I don't take that as an excuse, but okay, anyway.
The issue here was, and Mr. Gamka's right, he took it back to his board, but they had no discussion.
Right.
That was never brought up in their meeting. There was nothing, which tells us, they all knew what they were doing when they walked in the door. Because if he's the only one that knew it, where was that discussion? It wasn't in a public meeting and that's what set this firestorm off.
Ms. Shibe Snyder?
That is untruthful. And I, I don't, don't appreciate that comment. There was no discussion with my board about how they were going to vote. Actually, I was surprised myself.
I was surprised.
I would have been the deciding vote and at that moment, it didn't really matter because the motion had already carried. I did not have discussion about how anybody was going to vote prior to it. Mr. Noble, at the previous meeting, because we do have, our meeting's a little bit sooner, everybody was provided with the budget during our report, he did make a comment that he wasn't in favor of that. So I assumed he wouldn't be voting for it, but then I've had him conversa, have him say things at meetings and do something opposite when he votes. So no, there was no discussion. And I, I don't really want to hear that comment again. What we need to do is move forward and figure out what we can do. We had increases that, by the way, the response from the residents after the emails went out to, I believe, the entire Nakfa board, the entire Nakfa employees by Captain Assistant Chief Matt Wile.
You're muted, I am.
Have I been muted the whole time or did I just mute myself?
Just, just the last fifteen seconds.
Oh, that's weird. Okay, so.
You, you mentioned the email from Matt Wile and then you went unmuted.
Okay, so the email, I, I, the, the phone calls, the emails that I received were all in support of Rose Township. I just want to, the where I really felt the demise, I believe the, the email was titled, "The Demise of Nakfa." So I looked into our budgets. In two thousand and nineteen, there was a fifty-six thousand dollar increase. In two thousand and twenty, there was a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar increase. In two thousand and twenty-one, there was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand increase. When I, we did the hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar increase, our board was all aware that we were going to have to take from our general fund at that time. So maybe that's why there wasn't a discussion. We already knew, because our millage isn't renewed until next year, that we were going to be in a deficit. When I create the budget, I get comments from our board members, like, where are you going to find that money? I have to find that money. So to have, as Paul states, over three hundred thousand dollars coming out, that's, that's a lot. So in so one of the three years, we had a two hundred thousand dollar increase, not including what you're asking this year. That was why I, I did it. And then, and maybe there was no discussion and you don't have to have discussion. And so as far as going back and forth about, we talked about it ahead of time, we did not. And as far as discussion, you don't have to have discussion. We all must have had our reasons why. And we voted. And that's not the only time, I'm sure that's ever been done. Yeah, it was important because it was a budget. I did make discussion during our fire board meeting that I was not in favor of a full-time, another full-time personal, personnel, and I have reasons for that too. Such as we're taking the full-time administrators who I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, used to do duty shifts. And not having them do duty shifts. And now we're going to give them time to half that they do do a duty shift. And I don't know, there are some other things too, I guess we need to talk about. But I would think we should really move forward and see what we can do to pass a budget that we both agree on.
Oh, I had a, I had a meeting, as I mentioned before, with, with Chief last night. And I asked him, or maybe that can get, I ordered him to help me come up with a list here of, of things in this budget and some of the reasons why the budget is a hundred and two thousand more than, than last year. And he was, was kind enough after we ordered to, to provide me a list. I wanted to, I want to read this to you. I think it's critical to the, to the issue here. The, the first item is retention and recruitment and retention of on-call part-time employees continue to be a problem. The main factor of the problem is time commitment, wages, benefits, and lack of full-time employment position. The board agreed several years ago, the wages and benefits of employees needed to be increased in order to attract and maintain employees. Absolutely. In getting, it's getting more difficult to cover shifts at the station. Month after month, there are more and more open shifts. Our equipment, our equipment replacement budget has been neglected for the last five years, not having the funds to add to it. Run numbers continue to increase as the area grows. Majority of the increase in the fiscal twenty-two budget went towards increasing wages and creating another full-time position. Which also maintains employees and fill open shifts. We are not currently adding any new shifts. These are shifts that were created three years ago, the board agreed to have, so it covers the full stations twenty-four seven. Having the station level is also necessary in order to keep our current ISO rating. And, and lastly, and quite important actually, because of some of the online comment, the, the capital equipment schedule was something that I personally asked Chiefs to create. And I, I think it's good practice to, to be aware of things that we're thinking about in the future. And it's, this, this particular schedule is no more than just a spreadsheet showing what we should and should have been purchasing in order to keep up our nominal equipment replacement practice. This, this schedule was requested by the board, from the, by the board, from two weeks ago. And its intent was only to show the board what the department needs now and going to future. In reality, it was impossible to purchase these things right now or even in the next budget. So I, I, I think those are all fantastic points and thank you, thank you, Chief. I'm, I'm open right now to a, a motion as to how we would move forward. One, 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 one option that, that I would consider and think is probably very likely is to form a, a subcommittee to go off and sharpen our pencils on the budget and, and look at it. But I'm open to any suggestions that the board may have at this time. Mr. Collins?
I just wanted to clarify one thing for Ms. Shibe Snyder. I did not say that their board met privately. I said it gives the appearance. There's a difference in those two statements. I wanted to clarify that. Secondly, Mr. Stover, you've had two papers now that you've introduced into this meeting that you have, that the rest of us don't have to see. But to see, that's the one where you asked the chief to create those numbers. And then it's the legal response from Mr. Latte. So those are papers, we don't have the option to be looking at as you are. And I would prefer you to be able to see those papers along with you when we discuss them. Going onto the motion that you requested, if we formed a committee, I'd like to see, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Oh, you're done.
On that committee that you discussed, I would like to see that committee have one representative from Rose, one from Holly, and the chief be the third one. We can't have a committee of three because that creates a quorum. If they're from the board.
Yeah, ju- ju- just for clarity, I'm, I'm not, I'm not demanding that, George, I'm not telling you what to do, I'm, I'm just suggesting.
I'm agreeing with you and I said I'd like to see it set up that way.
Ms. Winchester?
Karen, he called your name.
I'm sorry, I, you're, you're, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I really don't believe we should be doing a committee. We could be doing it as a whole board with the chief. Like Diane said earlier, this is the chief's expertise. He brings what he can to the board. The whole board needs to understand the ramifications of, of going backward to last year's budget. We had the opportunity to do this, we weren't given it at that time. And I don't think, just a few people need to be doing that. A whole board needs to be doing it altogether.
So, so Karen, can I, can I presume that you would like to call a special meeting of the board for us to do that?
I think at this point, that's going to have to happen or we're going to do it at June.
I, I think you would call that a workshop, Peter, as opposed to an actual meeting.
Yeah, we got to be careful with the quorum.
Well, but you still do minute.
You can have a quorum in a workshop. So you, so you've got two ways to do it. You can do it via workshop or you can do it via committee. That's up to what this board wants.
Yeah, I don't believe committees work. You only have a couple, you know, a couple people making, making suggestions for the rest of the board.
Then Karen, are you making a motion?
We, I mean, we have a severe divide here, which, you know, is concerning that we didn't take care of this the last couple of months, we had an opportunity to do it in. And now we're taking up everybody's time and, and hysteria in the department, you know.
Karen, are you making a motion?
To have a workshop?
Yeah.
I guess I am. Not happy about it, but I am. Um, well, no, I'm not.
Is there, is there?
Making my statements.
Okay.
Is there, is there any proposed path here? Ms. Shibe Snyder?
Um, I would like to ask the chief to revisit his budget and we'll have a special meeting and we can go over those numbers. I guess I would ask him when he could have something like that ready. So for us to look at and determine that meeting date based on his availability to do that.
So I, ju- just, just a question, does, does the chief have enough information about Rose Township's position to, to, to be able to give a valid stab to that? Because I could see him going off and coming back with a nine hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget because he doesn't, he doesn't know the position of Rose Township.
I can't speak for the entire board, no member here can. So I, I think based on what, that we did agree to last year's amount, eight hundred and eighteen, that he could kind of keep that in mind as he creates that budget. I can't, I can't tell you how the board's going to vote.
Okay, so, so what was, just for clarity, was, was that a motion?
Oh, sure, oh, sure, I can make a motion.
I'm not forcing you to. I don't want to be accused of that.
No, that's fine, because we have to move forward. I mean, we're all really, really doing is, well, I don't even want to go into what we're doing, but what I think we need to do to move forward and make this happen is I'm going to make a motion to ask Chief Lince to create a new budget and give us a timeframe when we can meet again for a special meeting to discuss if we want to send it to our township boards. Personally, I mean, I'm assuming he can have that done. And I don't know, Chief, how long would that, oh, no, this is not my motion. So, all right, I'll just stick to the motion that will work with the chief to, let me start all over. Because I'm rambling and if this is the motion, I should make it clear. So, excuse me. I'd like to make a motion to have Chief Lince create a new budget based on the wishes of closer to eight hundred and eighteen thousand eight and, and eighteen, hundred thousand dollars to create a new budget in that for us to look at, at a special meeting.
I'll support.
Pat, would you read that motion back?
Yeah, sorry.
A minute.
I see it, Karen, hold on one second.
Thank you.
The motion is to have Chief Lince create a new budget based on eight, eight hundred and eighteen K to, I can't even read my own writing, and to consider at a special meeting.
For, yeah, I guess I should say for the Nakfa Board of Directors to consider at a special meeting. Special meeting. Needs a special meeting. We can't wait till our next meeting.
Look, Karen, I, I have to hold on for one second. Ms. Shibe Snyder has made a motion and typically we then have a discussion about the motion and the maker of the motion is given the right to speak first in, in favor of the motion.
Well, it was supported as well, I believe, correct?
So we have a live motion on the table, you were the maker of it, I give you the right to speak first in favor of your motion.
I, I think this is what we need to do to move forward. I'm willing to take extra time and put it into this. I think it's well worth it. It's something we need to do. So I'd like to continue with that.
Okay, Ms. Winchester?
The, the Nakfa Board voted unanimously to send the proposed budget to the communities. That process has not finished yet. Holly Township Board is, is going to vote tomorrow. So we're assuming that Holly Township wants to do that. However, we haven't brought back our board's wishes. And I, I know that wouldn't change the motion, but I just want to say, we're following proper procedure. The assumption when we forward it to the communities for approval is that the Nakfa Board approves what they've just done. So that's all I wanted to say. I think we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
Are there any other comments for, for the motion? Any other comments against the motion? Okay. Pat, I'm going to ask you to read that motion one more time, just to make sure we know what we're voting on right now.
Motion by Shibe Snyder, supported by Gamka, to have Chief Lince create a new budget based on eight, eight hundred and eighteen K to be considered by the Nakfa Board at a special meeting. That sound about right, Diane?
Yes.
Thank you.
There are no further comments, I'd like to take a roll call.
Shibe Snyder?
Yes.
Gamka?
Yes.
Winchester?
No.
Collins?
No.
Stover?
Yes.
Three to two.
We, we probably should have added it into the, into the motion, but I'm, I'm curious as to what the timing would be for you to be able to do this, Chief.
I'm assuming I can, over the next couple of days, can have something. Um, I'm assuming I can, over the next couple of days, can have something together. However, my schedule is not going to allow me to meet um, at least after hours. And I don't know if that's something that we need to do, or if everybody's flexible and can meet during the day. Um, I'm available Friday after twelve. I have a interview with a potential employee Friday morning. That would be the soonest uh next week. I'm flexible as of right now for whenever. Karen, he called you.
I don't know. You're cutting out for some reason.
I'm sorry.
Um.
He's just very quiet.
Well, I guess I'm really concerned about where this is gonna leave us, because if Holly Township says yes, um, they've approved the proposed budget for the Articles of Incorporation. So this board is saying that they're that they're not wanting to follow that, and if we can't come to an agreement on the original budget, which is what we're talking about, where does that leave us? Because you're saying no, but Holly, if Holly Township says yes, then what? Then we've approved a budget.
Yeah, and that was my very reason for for contacting the attorney to understand what that meant. And uh, he's he's concerned that if if uh, if Rose approves it at the eight eighteen level and Holly approves it at the nine twenty level, um, he's no longer worried about dissolving the authority. Um, you made that very clear. He's much more worried about our ability as a board to come to some resolution as to how to do that. We've never had that issue before. And so um, I I I hope it puts everyone's mind that is that if if you do as a board approve it tomorrow, we're in a good place. We're in a, we're in a place where um, we're we're gonna find some common ground and and move NACCA forward and continue to to provide the services that are required of our residents.
I hope so.
I do, too. Mr. Collins?
I I just wanted to offer clarification, both to Ms. Winchester and Mr. Stouffer. You did that in part. Tomorrow, our board will view the budget that NACCA sent back to them, and they will vote yea or nay. At that point, if NACCA through the negotiations comes up with a new budget, that will have to go back to our board for a second approval. So in it's just part of the process.
I did. I think you're correct. Uncharted territory, so I appreciate all the guidance. Is there any further discussion or any further motions regarding twenty twenty-two budget?
Do we want to come up with a date? Does everybody have the calendar ready so we can come up with the date and time? Chief, you mentioned, I believe, the uh next Friday? Right?
No, this Friday.
This Friday the twenty-first? Oh, okay. And that would be after your board meeting. Um, and then you said afternoon you would be available?
I said three, yes. Friday would be the soonest I'd be available. It'd have to be after eleven or twelve, so maybe the afternoon.
Okay.
Other than that, um, next week is pretty open.
I'm available for that day, the afternoon, and um, the twenty-first. How about anybody else?
I'm not.
Are we, are we talking about a virtual meeting or an in-person meeting?
We can still be virtual and virtual, yeah.
Karen, Karen, that doesn't work for you?
Oh, two days from now?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm not available.
I'm available on May twenty-fifth. It's a Tuesday.
Would make myself available most any, most any time.
Let me check my calendar for May twenty-fifth.
George, what time on the twenty-fifth were you thinking? I do have a meeting in the morning. My day is wide open.
Check here.
I would have to do it after eleven AM.
And that wouldn't be bad, because chief, I mean, you could present it to us ahead of time. We would have a time to look it over, so that probably would be actually a better date.
Okay.
Give us a little bit of time to look at it. Um, I am available the twenty-fifth as well. So Paul's available, George. Um, did you say you were Karen?
Only um before two o'clock.
Okay, and the chief, yours was what time?
After eleven.
Okay, and Pete?
Uh, I don't, I don't matter. I don't get a vote in this thing, so I will make myself available at any time that the board chooses.
Okay, so um, let's do, how about eleven thirty? Then, does that sound good to everybody? Um, the twenty-fifth? Eleven thirty PM or AM? On the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Pardon me? No, yeah, I'm up then. Um so.
Yeah, but the question is how cool here?
Yeah, that's. Um, so I have Tuesday, the twenty-fifth at eleven thirty AM. Does every and I believe everybody is available, so does that sound good?
Yes.
All right.
Chief, can you, can you make sure the meeting uh notice goes out?
I can. I will do that.
And 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 again, um, just as a, as a good business practice, I would, I would highly encourage. Gotta watch my words.
I will have several examples.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
And can I request that we, um, the rest of the board get sent a copy of the two items that you entered into the meeting tonight, the
Oh, because no, from, one is my my personal notes that I read to you. Um, I'll be more than happy to send the the correspondence with Mr. Latty, but the other one is is personal.
The one from Mr. Lins? The numbers from him?
The one that Mr. Lins and I worked on.
That's not personal. If it's business.
Well, I'm I'm just gonna make this side note. I have some notes that I asked Mr. Lins to work on for me. When I asked, this was back in October, and I asked him how many years Rose Township had had a a member, a citizen at large, and how many times um that Holly Township had had a citizen at large, and I asked him for that same information. It it wasn't over the phone. I went over to his office to meet with him. And you were vehemently offended that I did that without your knowledge, and yet you're allowed now to talk to him and have personal notes. I just think that's an interesting side comment.
I I I think I was, um, I was questioning whether or not you've had a quorum because I wasn't sure at the time, because I think Ms. Winchester was also present at that meeting. And I wasn't sure at the time if the chief as a um I I forget the exact term, a m- member of the board.
Ex-official.
Ex, thank you, Karen. As ex-official member, if he counted as as part of a forum, that that was my my concern about that.
Your concern was that we had a private meeting.
Personal conversation that I had with the chief over a few beers at Northern Arc Brewery are not part of the official record, and I read them in.
Uh, one beer, one, I had one beer.
I do.
Like to make that. Uh, Mr. Collins, I will he's, he may have jotted down comments or something on the notes that I gave him. I will give you the clean version of what I sent him. I don't, it's not a problem. It's just uh basically verbatim what he read, but I don't have a problem sharing that. All right, and and for the record, once you read them into the minutes, I don't think they become personal anymore, whatever. We we can agree to disagree.
We disagree. Having said all that, um that that, is there any further discussion on the budget? Okay, I want to thank you all for your input on this. I know this is a a difficult subject, and I'm I'm sure that as as adults, we will get through this and and end up with a stronger, better uh fire authority from this.
Yeah, I agree.
Karen, you, Karen, you allow uh public comments?
Excuse me, I'm 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 not, and we're not there yet.
Okay.
At this point, that's the end of our new business. Um, great segue. At this point, uh, we will allow public comments. Public comments are limited to to three minutes. Um, they can be on any subject whatsoever, and uh, they're, they're not going to be responded to by the board. They're just not opportunity for the public to enter their their opinions into the record. Is there any public comment?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a public comment.
Go ahead, Tim.
Uh, Holly Township President Timothy Seal, four five nine Riverside Drive, Holly, Michigan, four eight four four two. A couple of the things that I wanted to mention, uh, number one, I'm not sure who the chairperson was referring to. As the officer of the department that's been commenting on uh, that's been commenting on social media. However, uh, I do know that as a board member, you are part of the approval process of the policy. And I'm certain that you know what those are, and I can assure you as a uh, member in my position that the policy was followed and everything was approved through the proper channel. So hopefully that will help you out a little bit. Secondly, the change in posture on the board for the past several months has been very disturbing. And I've made this comment before. I hope everybody, everybody remembers that this is the livelihood of people. Uh, these people are very dedicated to their passion. And they would like to know that they'll be able to continue on with their career. I know it is financially stiff at times. I understand that. Uh, I am somewhat concerned about some of the actions of the board going to other board meetings and bullying and chastising in, at times could be construed intimidating um, in their own townships uh, regarding actions taken on the fireboard. I don't think that's appropriate. Uh, I think it's out of line, and I don't think it's very good conduct to be involved in. Uh, m- Mr. Chairman, I also ask that at this time, um your position is a citizen at large, and a citizen at large is supposed to um, represent the entire service area um, in no uh subsidiary or subsection within the ser- service area. So as a citizen at large, I don't know if people are able to get a hold of you to help voice their opinions as you are the citizen at large, and that's who the person should be directed through. Uh, I am unclear, and if you care to respond, maybe you could clear that up. Uh, I certainly appreciate all your work as board members. Uh, I know it's time consuming. I know there's a lot going on, but I just ask that everybody keep in mind that these are our careers of individuals and dedicated servants. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
This is Randy Harless. I'm a resident of Springfield Township, and uh, thought I'd just look into this because it affects some of my brothers and sisters in the fire service. Um, this is the first time I've watched one of these board meetings. You guys, you got a lot of healing to do on this board. There is so much end fighting. The first time I've watched this and noticed this, it's embarrassing from an outside person looking in. You really need to just, I'll check yourself and make sure you're doing the right thing. And that's what I, that's what I see from the outside.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Uh, yes, uh, this Chester Coop, Rose Township. Um, when you had your, when you first began your discussion regarding uh the budget and stuff, I think one of the uh, comments that was made starting it out was, uh, we have a whole, whole lot of work to do. And my question that came to mind, my my mind was, yes, you do, but this should have been done long before now. Uh, you four people, or the four people that are on the fireboard that are elected officials, you're fully aware of the budget tearing budget process, how long it takes. Um, and if you didn't start this until April uh, or had any discussions before April, um, then I think that that was the wrong thing to do. Discussing an item or bringing up a concern is a good idea, but you gotta resolve it. You don't wait until you approve to send out a a a budget and then simply say, well, I I I asked, I had to discuss it, but you never resolved the issue, so that's why you're here now. So I I would encourage you to do this. Uh, I've never seen this process, and I was on the fireboard for ten years. And I've never seen this process go this way. I was in, I was involved in the drafting of the Articles of, uh, the Articles of Incorporation. A lot of that was driven, and I think Karen Winchester can vouch for me on this, is a lot of those things that are in there were driven by what happened in two thousand and four and two thousand and five. And and uh, when when the village of Holly pulled out. And um, I I I, up and up until a cup, about a month ago, I was, I was really concerned about where the department was headed. Um, I'm afraid now. Um, there is, there, you can see the tension when you meet. Um, and it's not helpful to us, and don't forget, it's not only the firefighters you're concerned about. You should be concerned about twelve, about twelve hundred, about twelve thousand people. These are the people that are going to be, in fact, if this thing goes down the tube, everybody's gonna get hurt. You're not gonna have the service that you have now. Um, so uh, I would really suggest that, you know, you be realistic and that, and don't have dreams about what kind of budget you'd like and resolve it. So um, I hope that you can get together and resolve this and that uh, some of these personal issues that other people observing um, can be put on the back burner because it's not about you. It's about Rose Township residents, and it's about Holly Township residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coop.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to let you know that uh, as the host of the meeting, that um, identified as GM iPhone has had a hand raised, sir.
GM iPhone?
Yes, sir. This is Gary McDonald, uh, resident of Rose Township, nine 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 one, Cambridge Acres Court. Um, I had a few questions, and the first one I wanted to start off with was with the overtime issues. Um, Fire Chief stated, and he actually answered prior to this, when he, when he mentioned that, when this meeting started about the effects of COVID eating up a lot of that budget. But I wanted to make note that uh, the previous budget or the the budget that they're under right now was only for their full-time staff or their full-time employees. That budget was only at seventeen percent as of April twentieth. And the big one I saw was the part-time overtime budget was was over budget by one hundred and thirty-three percent. Obviously, COVID ate that up, but if COVID didn't exist, it seems to me that the overtime really isn't an issue. If there were only full-timers were at seventeen percent, I don't, I don't know what the legalities of uh, feeding into that full-time budget with the paid-on call or or vice versa. Oh, that was one question. Another one I have, salary is at eighty-five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars. Yet I see uh, two payroll uh, two payroll items in here with chief making seven thousand dollars on a pay period, just over seven thousand dollars on a pay period. Is that something that happens every pay period? Because if so, that's over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in a salary, which is roughly what, eleven percent of the budget? That's that that seems like a big uh, something that we need to look at. I don't know what all that entails. And I don't know if you guys can answer that, or that would have to be a FOIA item of information. And that is all I have right now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairperson?
Mister Chairperson, if I could quickly, those budget spreads.
Chief, chief, we we we, we do not respond to the public comments. Are there any further public comments?
Uh, to the chair, Mr. Noble had his hand up, but he is muted, sir.
So be- before you go forward, Mr. Noble, do do we have a. Township quorum issue if Mr. Noble participates? I don't know. Diane? You're muted. Well, he's still talking, but he's muted too. George, I need some guidance here. Can 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 Glenn speak here?
He can speak. It's a question of whether the, whether Diane and Paul join in in a, in a conversation. That's. That's the way I would view, they would be in trouble.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Noble, you're you're muted. We haven't heard anything you've said.
That's for the chair, sir. I'm going to uh, send him a request to unmute. Maybe that will help if that's acceptable.
If you can.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, George.
Can you next to mine his phone?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was muted actually when I commented that he can speak as a member of the public if he wishes.
Okay. Should you contact him so he can participate?
Yes, I, if that's all right, I'll contact him by phone.
I don't know about the rest of you, but the day we can stop doing this virtual stuff and get back to in-person.
Hey, I'm gonna put you on. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, that's. Okay, all right, thank you. He's, he's not going to speak. We, I've actually been with him a couple of times trying to fix this. We've done some tests, so I guess we're gonna have to do some test again. His audio's not working, obviously. Um, but he just said thank you to the board, um, good job. Um, and that's all he had to say.
Are there any further public comments? I see three hands up. I see uh. Matthew.
Yeah, uh, this is Matthew Kirkpatrick, uh, resident of Holly Township. Uh. To, I I wanted to make a statement, cause it was, um. There, there was something that was said that was incorrect when Gary McDonald was talking about uh, the overtime. Um, that overtime included two pair, pay periods. I I hope that uh. Uh, people don't think that it is that high for one pay period. That was uh, the amount uh, for two pay periods. Um, other than that, I would, I would like to say I I really appreciate uh, North Oakland as an organization. Um, the tremendous work you guys have done, and uh, I appreciate being a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else that cares to make a public comment? Captain Seal, do you see any other hands up that I don't see?
Uh, no, sir, at this point, I do not.
You, you said you had three hands, I thought.
They were uh, from Glenn and uh, the other one that already talked.
Okay, hearing, hearing no more public comments, I would like to uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Support, Ms. Snyder? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you, everyone, for your time today.
Thank you. Have a good evening.